All righty, are we ready? All righty, if anyone intends to speak, we're going to get started here in about 30 seconds. Please fill out a speaker card, looks like this, and provide it here to our lieutenant, and we'll make sure that you're heard. Counsel, are we ready? City staff, ready? Good evening, everyone. It is 6:43 PM, September 17th, 2024. We're at the Cape Canaveral City Council Regular Meeting, City Hall Council Chambers at 100 Polk Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida. I call this meeting to order. Councilmember Davis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Cullum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
All right, thank you all for being here, city staff, and all of you who joined in public, here physically and online. Counsel, do we want to approve the agenda as written, or are there any amendments? We have two presentations, 10 items on the consent agenda, and this is really about the order, not polling consent agenda, two public hearings, two items for action, and one item for discussion. If there's any change in order, or striking, or even add-ons, now's the time. I see none.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis, to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Cullum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, now we have the presentation interviews portion of the meeting. The first presentation is by the Brevard Homeless Coalition Executive Director, Ms. Amber Carroll. Amber, are you here? Come on forward if you're ready. Thank you so much. Yes, right there at the podium, and should be able to, if you need the mic, should be able to pick you up okay? Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Again, my name is Amber Carroll, and I'm the Executive Director for the Brevard Homeless Coalition. It's so good to be here. Just as a show of hands, who is familiar with the Brevard County Continuum of Care? Continuum of Care? Great. It's very important for me to ask that question, so that I don't assume we are all speaking the same language. So I'm going to spend just a few minutes explaining who I am and what I do for this community, and why it is important that I am here to talk this evening about House Bill 1365. Have you heard about House Bill 1365? Okay. But first, let's start briefly about what the Brevard County Continuum of Care is. It runs much like, it was established much like a city government is. The federal government HUD designated geographical regions throughout the country, organized geographical regions to address the issue of homelessness in our country. In Florida, we have 27 geographical regions that we call the Continuums of Care. Some geographical regions have one county, some have multiple counties. My continuum of care that I oversee leadership of is Brevard County, so we have one county for this continuum of care. We are responsible for applying for and administering federal and state dollars that are designated for homeless services in Brevard County. So when we hear about emergency shelter operations, and permanent housing, and street outreach efforts, homeless prevention, those dollars, my organization will apply for on behalf of the community, and then we serve as a pass-through to direct service organizations. So many of you have heard of organizations such as Family Promise, or Daily Bread, or Sharing Center. We work, we contract with those agencies to perform direct services. So the continuum of cares operate much like they're a membership body, so like your community who elects you to carry out the, make sure that your community, the city of Cape Canaveral, is taken care of. Our membership body elects an advisory council, and that advisory council is made up of government officials, of nonprofits, of business leaders, of advocates, people who have experienced homelessness in our community. That advisory council comes up with policies and best practices, and oversees the system of services in Brevard County. And then we have a lead agency, and that is my organization. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we work kind of like your city staff does. We carry out the services, we carry out administering, the administrative side of what is happening in our COC. When a House Bill 1365 was made and signed into law, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with what that is, it is a new law that states that it is the right of a Brevard County resident, well, this is for the state of Florida, but for us, for our purposes, a Brevard County resident, business owner, or the Attorney General can sue a municipality or our county government for allowing someone to sleep on public property. And so those individuals who are sleeping outside are unsheltered individuals, are homeless individuals. Now residents and business owners and the Attorney General can now turn around and sue cities in our community for allowing that to happen. And why does that matter in Brevard County? If we wonder, do we have a problem? Is this something that we need to be concerned about? One of the tasks that each COC, so for my organization, is that we carry on the point in time count. Anyone familiar with the point in time count? Up on your handout, you received a little graph. Each year, on the last 10 days in the month of January, continuum of cares throughout the country perform what we call the point in time count. And we go, and that is our homeless census. So we have a regular census for people who have addresses. For those who don't have addresses, we have what we call the point in time count. So we mobilize over 150 volunteers in Brevard County to go and survey those who are experiencing homelessness on a single night in Brevard County. So for this past year, we counted 1,116 individuals, the highest count Brevard County has seen since the year 2015. And it was, last year was the highest year, so this year it increased by 6%. Some significant changes that matter to us in regards to House Bill 1365, as we are called to come up with a plan on how to address that, is our unsheltered count, those who are, who have no place to stay, increased 17%, while our sheltered count, meaning those who had access to emergency shelters or transitional housing, decreased by 13%. What that means is we do not have emergency shelters in this county. When our law enforcement are called out to respond to somebody who is sleeping in a public space, and they need to be moved on, many of our ordinances say that they need to offer them a shelter place to go. If, and if the person chooses to not go there, then they can trespass the person, or maybe arrest them. The truth is, we don't have a place for people to go in Brevard County. And so our chronic homeless count, and what that means are people who have been homeless for a year or longer, who have a disabling condition, increased by 72% from last year. That means in Brevard County, people are experiencing homelessness and staying homeless for longer. Now, that is not good. And it's not good for many reasons. It's not good because we are not making any progress so far in establishing emergency shelters. It's something that we, in Brevard County, have decided we weren't going to do, and many years ago. And so now we are playing catch-up, and we're seeing what happens when that part of the system is missing. Just to kind of put it in perspective, when you look at the stats, so what we do as the COC, we perform the point in time count, and then we give all that information to HUD. So when you hear statistics about homelessness in Brevard County, or throughout the state of Florida, or in the United States, our COCs have gathered all that data and sent it up to the federal government. By the way, this is de-identified, so we don't send personal information, just so you know. But last year, Brevard County was the fifth, number five, for the largest unsheltered count in the state of Florida. So of all the counties in the state, Brevard County was the fifth highest number. This year, I think we're number six, because Orlando jumped us. So we have, out of all of the counties in the state of Florida, we are in the top five, six. In the country, there is a report called the AHR Report, and it's a report that's gathered and given to Congress on the state of homelessness in the country. And for the last two reports, Brevard County has been in the top five of the COCs with the largest suburban numbers of chronic homelessness individuals. I'll try to say that in layman's terms. There were five COCs that were called out who had the highest, like a largely suburban area, who had the highest number of chronically homeless individuals, those who were homeless for a year or longer. We're getting national recognition, we're getting state recognition for this growing problem in our community. So what are we going to do about it? And House Bill 1365 was not something that we saw coming, and, but what it is encouraging us to do, and has been a light at the end of, or a light in the middle of it, is that it is encouraging us to work together to come up with solutions, really for the first time in a long time, let's just say that. So a couple of big picture takeaways that we can glean from the data that we've, we got from the point in time count, and as it relates to House Bill 1365. Our unsheltered homeless counts are rising at the same rate that our housing availability is declining. You've heard that housing is a problem, affordable housing is an issue in our community, housing stock inventory, but we can show that the, as homeless numbers rise, the availability of housing decreases. And so we know that homelessness is a housing problem for a lot of reasons. We also know that we have no, zero, we have zero low barrier shelters, there's little funding for street outreach, which that is the work that we do to go and work with those who are unsheltered, and get them access to resources and support. And then there's a giant shortage of permanent supportive housing, and that is housing that is affordable and comes with wraparound services, and that is the majority of what the funding that we receive and work with direct service organizations, it goes to those supportive wraparound services. So beginning this Friday, the 20th, at 7:30 AM, we have our first House Bill 1365 work group, and it's comprised of city managers and planners throughout Brevard County, representative from the sheriff's office, and some of our chief of police as well. I would love for a representative from Cape Canaveral to join us. City manager would be wonderful, or planner, somebody who can come to the table. What we're going to do in this work group is we are going to not, we are going to come up with a list of options that we could bring back to our councils and the county commission, and say, here are some ideas that we have that we could do to address this issue in our county, in our community. So one of my asks here today is for somebody from your staff to join us. There's four work groups that are happening, and then together, we will work on coming up with ideas. We're going to look at real cost, actual cost, hidden cost, what are programs, so that we can pull together those resources and get our, understand, get our arms around what's really going on, and then come back to you with kind of like, hey, here's where we're at, here's the cost of what, how homeless response looks in your community, and here's how we can work together to address it. That's my big spiel, so I make myself available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Amber. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Carroll?
No, I appreciate the presentation. I've got to hear your presentation before at the Florida League of Cities, or Space Coast League of Cities, and it's admirable, the work you're doing, and hopefully we can try to help.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your work that you're doing. I know Matthew Shope has an event coming up. Is it the Fall Festival, or what event does Matthew Shope have?
I am not sure.
Okay. I was going to follow, because I follow them on Facebook, so it was something that was for them, but thank you for your work.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you again. I think we have an item for action tonight with your, the request to actually take action on recommending a staff member to support, so thank you.
Yes. Would you like me to stay for that, or is that something, they will contact me after?
You certainly do not have to stay.
We'd be happy to contact you afterwards.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That is great. The next item here is a presentation of the Florida League of Cities University Gold Certificate of Excellence to City Councilmember Don Willis. I just want to say here that the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, we call IEMO, was designed by the Florida League of Cities to help elected officials in Florida's municipalities to effectively meet the requirements of their elected role. Councilmember Willis has achieved the Gold FLC University Certificate of Excellence for elected municipal officials for 2024. Councilmember Willis, congratulations. If you'd like to go down front, I'd be happy to present this to you. Thank you. Mr. Willis, and floor is yours, if you'd like to say a few words.
I'll try to be brief. I'm very much appreciative for the opportunity to learn more, to better serve our citizens of Cape Canaveral, and advocate for the resources to help our city in any way possible. And I appreciate the Florida League of Cities making opportunities available to not only learn, but to interact with other agencies that can help us provide more for our residents here in Cape Canaveral, and I appreciate the city's forbearance in allowing me to do it, so thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, that concludes the presentations and interviews portion of our meeting. We are at 7:01 PM here, and public participation portion of the meeting, I have one card. If you do intend to speak, please make sure you take, fill out a card and bring it forward. We'll make sure you're heard. The first card I have is Mr. John Benton.
Okay, I'm here for my code reduction hearing. And it's funny that the homeless coalition came in here, because this is what it's about. You guys found me guilty of living in a warehouse that I own with a police officer in a unit next to me. I'm not going to live in a warehouse with a cop in the unit next to me, and he's up there as much as I am, and you had the deputies come up there and do an investigation for close to six months, and they did not come in and testify that I lived in that warehouse. But Kevin Mann from the Presbyterian Church, he came in and testified I lived in that warehouse, and that he had nobody living in that warehouse. But on the sex offender site, Deacon Kevin Mann at the Presbyterian Church, his son claimed that he was living in the warehouses. And when your city employee asked him, after I brought it to your board here's attention, they asked him, is his son living in it? And he said, no, he's working security. Well, the cops never even talked to him. Why didn't he come in and testify I lived in that warehouse besides the deacon? He wanted my two warehouses, because he owns 67% of them, forcing people out. You found me guilty, and your board laughed at me. Your city manager got fired because he trespassed me, because Judge Crawford asked me to bring a sign here that I was holding in front of the courthouse, because you guys caused the problem. And one of the signs said, "Bogdan Muzamuz hires corrupt boneheaded lawyer because she wouldn't let me defend myself after Kevin accused me of living in that warehouse." This is why we have a homeless issue with people like this board. You don't do anything, you create the problem, and then they do that count, and the count goes up. And then the churches come in and say, hey, we need money. We need some money to help the homeless people. Well, you guys, you Christians are causing the problem. You wouldn't even help your own citizen, me. I lived here for 20 years, owned a warehouse on the beach, or owned, down there, right across from you, mayor. You owe me a code reduction hearing. Judge Crawford said if I had a sign that day, he would hold it for me if it said I was railroaded, or he said he may hold it. And now you can't make any anonymous phone calls anymore, because Kevin Mann got his renters to call on the phone. Benton's living in his warehouse, and code enforcement's not doing their job, not one cop. The cops are the ones that got in trouble that night. The cops that came and investigated, talked, and took pictures of me, they didn't even come in and testify, but when I came to the council and told them what happened, Mr. Randall sent him out to the jail. That's a demotion. He didn't want to, those guys didn't deserve to be out there, they did their job, they were polite. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, and you owe me a code reduction hearing, and I told you that I was going to come in here until Kevin Mann came in and apologized to you guys and the deputies for lying. Thank you.
That is all the cards that I have for today. Again, if anyone intended to speak, please come forward, seeing none. And for those of you who are listening online, we ask that you please raise your hand. I'll be sure to unmute you if you intend to speak. Okay. Seeing no hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, bring it back to the council before the consent agenda. We do have 10 items on here. Do we wish to pull any items? I think I did receive an email on the minutes. I think our city clerk replied and gave some help there. I'm not sure, I think that was the number three, they approved the minutes for September 3rd, I believe. That was the ref-
No, August. Item number two.
Thank you. It was item number two. Thank you very much. Okay. I would like to pull that one. We have two other sets of minutes, the August 12th budget workshop, August 20th regular meeting, the September 3rd special meeting. Then we have three resolutions, one for municipal law enforcement services between the city of Cape Canaveral and the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, also with another resolution for our fire protection with the Cape Canaveral Volunteer Fire Department, that's the fifth item. And number six is reappointing some Board of Adjustment members, and also reappointing members and the Alternates for Culture and Leisure Services Board. I'm just going through here. A lot of times, we vote the consent agenda through. Those listening may not hear what we're actually voting, and so number seven is to approve mutual aid between the 45th Space Wing, City of Cape Canaveral, for fire protection, hazardous materials, incident response, and authorize the city manager. Number eight and nine is, are both addendums. One is for fertilization with black spray service, that's a contract we do about this time every year, and then for lawn maintenance with US lawns. The fertilization is $64,688, and the lawn services and landscaping mowing, $309,870.25. And last is the city budget expenditure of $76,900 for Kembling Horn and Associates for the engineering cost, excuse me, for the engineering cost, design costs associated with the presidential streets improvements. That last one, do we need to pull that one with anything that we did in the CRA?
No, sir. The CRA board made a recommendation that is consistent with this consent agenda item.
Okay. So item number two is the only one I see at this time.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, number one, and three through 10.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Tim Cullum, second by Councilmember Willis, to approve items one and three through 10. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Cullum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Passes 5-0. For nine of the 10 items, item number two is to approve the minutes for the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting. The comments that we heard at the last meeting and the emails was that the August 2024 meeting minutes do not accurately record my comments during public participation. This is from a citizen. My ask was that the records show that I have asked four times for the information on who falsified the public records by entering the complaint dated 5/24/23. Instead, a watered-down cryptic comment, we're in the meeting minutes since another month has gone by. I would like records to reflect that on five separate occasions, I've asked for this information. The types of minutes that our city clerk does, and I think we updated months back, capture the actions taken by the city council, and the minutes do not reflect verbatim or summarize individual comments. Public participation comments are captured via the city's YouTube channel, if you do want verbatim. However, this is council's discretion to amend the minutes as they see fit via a majority vote. If we go to that specific area of the minutes, that would be during the public participation, which says, Tamara Mulback, resident, discussed the city's investigation into 116 Jackson Avenue and alleged city records being falsified. Counsel, do we feel it is important to emphasize the quantity of times that she, Ms. Mulback, has asked? From my understanding, that's her request, is that, my ask was that the records show I have asked four times for the information, so I think that would be the request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Please.
Wouldn't her four requests be present in all the previous minutes? Each time?
Yes, I think every time Ms. Mulback spoke at a meeting, one could go back and see, I think during the public participation, somewhat of this, that you could. The, there was also email requests. And so I don't know if those are being counted, but I think the point that Ms. Mulback is questions- point that Ms. Mulback is, questions that have been asked multiple times, should it be noted that if somebody was reading the minutes, they could see that they asked multiple times here? Any, any other comments? I don't have a problem with, and we've done this in the past, where a public participation felt that their participation was not represented. And while we do not do verbatim, I do think that one of the big parts of public participation is residents are coming forward, and they're, they're stating things that they want to go on the record. And while she's not requesting verbatim, she does, I think her intent for going to the meeting was that if you put anything on the record, put that. And I don't see the harm in putting it on the record. I think it accurately represents what her intent was to be stated, and serves, I think, as a better set of minutes looking forward. But-
Has anybody listened to the tape to verify that that is in fact accurate of what she's saying? I'm not saying she's lying, I'm just saying, has anybody verified what she actually said before we change the minutes for the community that knows, Mr. Trump, you don't have to-
I think we could ask the city clerk.
As I stated in my email, back to Ms. Mulback, I don't capture, I try not to summarize someone's intent under public participation. Now, if counsel were to have addressed her during that time, I probably would have put more detail. But as far as I'm concerned, she addressed counsel during a public meeting which was captured on YouTube, and so it is in the record. It may not be captured on that portion of the minutes, but that's up to you. If you want to amend the minutes and put in verbiage that you think is appropriate and captures her intent, you can do that. But I don't do that because then I'm, a lot of people get up and talk at some of our meetings. So how many pages do you want the minutes to be? And that's no reflection on her. I'm not being negative or positive. It's just a neutral way of capturing public participation.
You.
Mm-hmm.
I remember her saying the fourth time. I have went back and reviewed. I just, not the official records, but was that accurately what she said that night? That's what I recall, and my, my notes are consistent with that. So I think, now whether or not that was actually the fourth time, I haven't went back and verified. Was that, you know, that part accurate? But it is what she said, so.
And I know that she has asked that multiple times, but I would have to go back and look at what meeting and that to get, but I am aware she's asked that several times.
Yes, I actually, I have my notes, and I can share these. She, it was stated on 5/7 at a special meeting was the first time. 5/21/24 is the second time. July 10th, 2024 was the third time, and then July 16th. So.
Is that in her email?
It's, it's, she basically provided the, the same statement. If you go in through the emails, you can see. And then the, when I went back and listened to it, she states those dates in her message. But I did not go back and then connect each one of those dates that she, that I just read that she states. That would be, I don't have a problem with saying though, it's, it was the fourth time stated.
I don't either. I, I think it should, I mean, if we had addressed her, then it would be in here, in the records. I don't see the problem with adding that she has asked several times or four times before. I don't see that being a problem.
Okay. So the minutes today, Tamara Mulback, resident, discussed the city's investigation into 116 Jackson Avenue, alleged, and alleged city records being falsified. She's, tonight I want to, I want the meeting minutes to reflect that for the fourth time, now this is my rough, this is not verbatim. That was generally what she said. So I don't know the best way to state, say it. But city clerk, do you have any recommendation on how to best represent what she is requesting?
If, if you think I want the minutes to reflect this was the, my fourth time requesting, I can easily amend the minutes to include that. Sounds like what you were just saying.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Or she stated, and stated the minutes should reflect, this was the fourth time, something to that effect.
I think that would capture it. Okay. Do you need a specific language in the motion, or where?
If you want to do that, you can.
I'd rather not. I'd trust that you would, I think, get it, you know, get it right.
Do you want us to bring the minutes back for approval, or just go ahead and-
That sounds like more work.
Okay.
I think it's helpful to have it tonight, so you don't have to bring it back.
Okay. Do that. And I'll share the minutes after they've been signed and approved.
Okay. Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion on this? So I guess looking, I move to amend the minutes to reflect the changes our city clerk discussed about the fourth time this instance was brought up. So she'll bring those changes to me before we sign, and if council's okay with that, I think we'll be on the right track. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Morrison, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cullum. Any further discussion?
Will we be providing her with what she's asking, since she's asked for it five times?
She wanted the record to state-
Four times, and then making sure that the record reflects this. So adding it to the minutes is the accurate way to reflect it. But how will we address what she's requesting?
She says the minutes do not reflect, oh, I'm sorry. She said, that was what our city clerk said. My ask was that the records show that I have asked four times for the information on who falsified the public records. So I think, yeah, Tamara Mulback, resident, discussed the city's investigation into 116 Avenue for the fourth time. She said that, you know, it was her fourth time, I think, if it said that. And are you saying, should it be fifth?
No, I'm just, I guess I'm asking, since this keeps coming back as a public comment, how do we address this, her request that she gets who gets the information?
Oh, I see what you're asking. I think we have, for this, for the minutes, I think we can tackle that on the discussion item, but-
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
No, no, that's, I understand what you're asking now. Councilmember Willis?
I just want to be sure that we don't open the door for our first public participation of this evening to want the same considerations.
We've done this in the past, and we've said no in the past. I think what the council's taking it on a case-by-case basis. I tend to lean more towards that if it's, if it's accurate and was said, and they, they wanted that to be stated, I think I'd, I'd support it. And I understand what you're saying. So it's up to the council. So we got a motion in a second to make the change. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Cullum?
Four.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, item number two, asked as amended. We now jump ahead to the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Don't we have to approve doing the consent agenda now?
Well, I think that's what we did. We just, we just approved them as amended, or we just, we approved them with those changes.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll double check, city clerk.
Yeah, that's correct.
We're clear? Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I think we're good. I think we're one through 10. And so public hearings, we are at 7:24 PM. The first public hearing, item number 11, is resolution number 202413.
Oops, hold on.
Adopting a final millage rate for Adverum taxes for the fiscal year 2425 on all taxable property located within the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
There we go.
City manager?
Yes, sir. Last time the council, sorry, last time council spoke on the budget, the council agreed to adopt a millage rate that was below rollback, specifically the general government millage rate of 3.2 mills, and the unchanged library-dependent special district rate of .0422. Combine those two, make a tentative combined millage rate of 3.2422. It is presented here for final adoption by this resolution, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so item number 11, this is second and final reading to pass the rate. I do have a, so this decrease, getting to the page number here, is the percentage, the reduction in revenues, well, I guess that would be shown on the, what percentage decrease would this be, I guess, in taxes? Is it 5% roughly?
Give that information, John.
Like where we go, well, I think the millage-
Well, I would refer back to where we were at the middle of the road that was done last, and then you went down to 3.2. So whatever the reduction, let's just go with the overall revenues. What were the revenues on September 3rd? 6.7 million? And now at the 3.2 is 6.3 million. So you dropped about $496,000.
Mayor, I have the sheet from last time, if this will be helpful. We were looking at this last time.
I have that one as well, too. Thank you.
So the total revenue you dropped out of the Adverum was $496,000?
Yes, thank you. So the $496,000, or roughly $500,000 is a, what, which percentage decrease?
Well, we'll do the percentage, we'll do the percentage for you. But coming down from where we were-
Yep.
Is below rollback. And about 7%.
A 7% decrease.
From where you were, middle of the road, down to where you went.
Below the rollback, what's the decrease, right?
Below, below rollback.
Because we're going below the rollback rate.
The rollback rate was 3%, uh, let's see. That would be 236,000, below rollback, and then the percentage would be-
That would be 6.3%.
3.6, 3.6, yeah. 3.6 below rollback.
Okay, so, and then, you know, this is, you could do a, a reduction from last year's millage rate. I didn't, we could do it from, well, yeah, those two, I think, are, we did it from the middle of the road, but that was a difference from the proposed rate. So 3.6%-
Below rollback.
Below rollback is a, is a, is a tax decrease, no doubt. And I'm very, very excited and proud and thankful for everyone who did this because I'm not sure, are we aware of any other cities that's lowered their rate below the rollback?
Not at this point, sir. But we could find out, because they're holding meetings, too.
Yeah, and I get-
And plus, we do ours a little bit, you know, if it's the 17th, they might do theirs on Thursday.
By October, I think we'll all know, obviously.
Oh, by September 30th, for sure.
Okay. Counsel, any, this is a public hearing item. We'll go to the public. That was my question, is just to understand the decrease, roughly $500,000, I think, and it was about half of that less than what was proposed prior. So thank you. Thank you again. Any questions?
I, yeah, I just want to say that I am against this. And by going below rollback, we put the city in a really financial sticky situation. And I just want to say that I was against it, and I hope that nothing major happens.
Any questions, anything else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so we want to go ahead and open it up to the public. Item number 11 on the agenda, resolution number 202413. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to read anything into the record as far as the public hearing item?
Sir?
Okay.
Just the ordinance on the next slide.
Got it. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. And for those of you listening online, if you'd like to speak, we ask that you please raise your hand. Proposed millage rate. Not seeing any hands raised. With that, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution number 202413.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cullum, and a second by Councilmember Jackson to approve resolution 202413. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Against.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Cullum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
All right. Resolution 202413 passes three to two. Thank you very much. Now we move on to ordinance number 12. Now we move on to ordinance number 12, ordinance number 192024, adopting the general fund and all the other funds, which I'll let our city attorney take it away.
Ordinance 19-2024, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Barat County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance, and it is the adoption hearing for the next fiscal year budget. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, city attorney, council, same process. If we don't have any technical questions or any questions at all for city staff, we'll bring it to the public hearing. This is it. This is the final, final vote. Is there anything, city manager, we need to know about in this change from last time?
No, sir, this is unchanged. Last time, the, the council decided to go to this rate and indicated an approval of a general fund contingency reduction to 314,126 dollars. And as we discussed in that previous meeting, the CRA contingency was reduced to 301,482. So this budget reflects those two changes to contingency to produce a balanced budget for you, sir.
Do you feel that this budget is going to be sufficient to get what we need done?
With what we've pushed out, yeah, we've got the, the capital projects done. Can't say for sure what Presidential Streets is going to come in at, we haven't bid that yet. We might have a challenge with that one, but everything else looks like to be aligning.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, any questions before we go public hearing? Councilmember Jackson, Willis, or Davis? Questions? This is a public hearing item. If you intend to speak, please come forward. We're going to go ahead and open it up to the public for item number, or, item number 12, ordinance number 192024, is read by our city attorney. If you intend to speak, please come forward. And for those of you listening online, please raise your hand, and we'll make sure you're unmuted to speak on adopting second and final reading, the budget. Ordinance number 192024. Seeing no hands raised or anyone coming forward, we will go ahead and close this public hearing item, bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 192024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, got a second by councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance passes 5-0, that is the first budget I've supported, and I'm very excited about that. Thank you all very much. Of course, I've supported budgets in the past, just not all of it, and so that felt very good, and I, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor? I would just like to thank the entire finance staff for an incredible job in adjusting to and bringing up the numbers and, you know, answering council's questions. It's just been remarkable, my whole staff. Thanks.
Agreed. Thank you to the entire staff, and Joey, thank you, sitting up front and taking some of those questions in real time head-on was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And special thanks to Joey and Cheryl in my absence.
They were, the whole team was commendable.
Yeah, their, their actions were over the top.
They did a great job.
Thank you all. Okay, so that is a big exhale, and I guess now the work begins with it, this, this cycle never ends. So that brings us to the last, well, excuse me, get oriented here. Item number 13, which is to provide direction to city staff regarding proceeding with the awarding, the bid from Atlantic Development of Cocoa for Oak Lane improvements in the amount of 806,571.50. Provide direction to city staff on proceeding with this bid. City manager?
Thank you. Right into the business of spending that money, we just approved the budget. Very grateful that this project came in under budget. I believe it was, Tim, correct me if wrong, I think it was around $830,000, and it came in at 806,000, which is terrific news. This is the long-awaited project to provide stormwater relief and an easement for the Mexican restaurant, La Cantina, as well as develop the roadway for Oak Lane, which includes the stormwater conveyance for all of those properties to the Canaveral ditch and a paved road and a curb and gutter to retain that stormwater. The design's been approved, it was bid, and this is the successful bid, but we did have a wrinkle, because once this project became a viable project, city attorney and Tim Car, Carlisle worked together to create an easement document so that the Mexican restaurant property could execute the easement, so that we could do the stormwater improvement on that property. We were under the impression that all wanted this improvement, and that's how the whole project started. Unfortunately, what we learned was that the members of the ownership, there are some siblings, and maybe, I think they're all family, four or five of them, unfortunately, one of them passed away, in the not-too-distant past. That meant that all of them could not sign the easement agreement, which is required. That person who passed away, their estate was in probate, and they felt like they had an idea who that person would be that would be inheriting that share of that ownership, and the city attorney has been in contact with that estate attorney. I don't know if he's got an update on that, but because there, at this point, we are unaware that they can actually execute the easement, because they don't, the legal authority's not there, because this is state issue, we believe they want to. So that kind of puts a wrinkle, and moving forward with this project, we can certainly do the project and hold back on that portion of it, and, and Tim had estimated that that portion would be 58,450. We could, we could proceed with that, that's an option, hoping that they come forward, they execute the easement agreement, and then we can keep that included, but if they don't, that means we wouldn't include it, we would finish it without that portion being done. In that scenario, where the contractor is done, then the, the owners, let's say, then finally come together with an easement agreement, well, now we don't have a contract anymore. We've paid that contractor, they're long gone. We didn't spend that money, but here we are, trying to satisfy this stormwater situation, and rebidding that could go, turn out to be more expensive, that, that small portion, which could represent additional costs. So there are options the council could consider, but before I say them, perhaps we should go to the city attorney and see if he's got an update on the contact with the estate attorney.
No, I don't have any new update regarding the status of their estate.
Thank you. And one of the options the council could consider is, of course, just doing the project without that stormwater improvement. And I know we don't want to do that, because we all wanted to provide stormwater relief to that property. Another option is to secure the city's financial interests while still preserving their ability to get this done at a later date. City council could direct staff to move forward with the proposal, withholding the 58,450 for a period of time, and this would take the city attorney to kind of massage this a little bit, that, that money could be set aside for a period of time to be defined, that if the owners come together and can make the easement agreement happen, that money will open up for them, and if any cost overage, they would have to absorb that cost overage. So that's how we, we could possibly limit our exposure to any cost overruns. Then there's also the possibility that perhaps the new ownership may not want to sign the easement agreement ever. I doubt that, but it's a possibility, and then we would just end up put that, putting that money back into, on the project fund. So those are just some options we can consider. Mayor, would love to get some direction and feedback from the council on that.
City attorney?
Question for Tim.
Tim?
Tim, I mean, is it possible to just approve the contract with contractor and specifically state in the contract that the work at La Cantina may be deducted from the contract price if we're unable to secure the easement?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. In fact, that, that's been discussed with him. I called him today and asked him, these are our options. And as he said it, he wants to be locked in to be able to, if he does any kind of extension, but for that section to come off, he is okay with that, because he won't be doing the work anyways. So all that product and the, the labor would be deducted from the total amount, yes.
We can, so the council can approve the full contract, including the work at, in the easement area? If the easement is not acquired, then we can do a deductive change order?
Correct.
We would obviously ward the construction contract accordingly, but, yeah, so that, that seems to me to be the, if the council's inclined to go forward with the project, the...
It may be helpful to, for Tim to discuss, you, you discussed extending. Now, I believe there's a 60-day requirement by our bid documents from bid opening, so that 60 days is up on October 7th. We would have to make a decision.
Yes.
But that timeframe could be extended by mutual agreement. What did they say to that question?
Okay, so the, the problem there with the contractor is, you're right, he can extend it with us. If we say, hey, we need another 60 days to dwell on this and to see if we can get the easement agreement so that we can execute the whole project as designed, he, we could do that, but he has subcontractors that he's already gotten prices for, like piping and stuff like that. They will only hold that price for a certain amount of time as well. So the contractor's holding the price from the subcontractor so that he can get it at what he bid it in, if that makes any sense. So for us to extend it, he wouldn't, he would not extend it an extra 60 days unless he was actually awarded the contract as a notice of award. So it would lock him in, that he has the project no matter what. But with that, I think, he said he could order all the items necessary to do the whole project, but then a, a conversation would need to be had if we don't think that, if we want, as, as Anthony said, if we want to take that section of project off, off the plans and just do what we have until we figure out what's going on with this parcel of land with the estate attorney, that, that conversation would need to be had before we do a notice of award, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Essentially, a 60-day extension, they would agree to, would give the estate issue 60 days to hopefully resolve it.
It would.
And we would, we would be going forward with this contract anyways, it's just giving them 60 more days to resolve it.
Right, and, and like I said, with, with talking to him, he said that he could start at another side, the west side of it. I do know that within this project, we have a, not to get into deep, real deep details, we have a pipe that's down there already that we're looking to, to actually connect to, that might actually save us a little bit more money. But if he starts on that end, it could be a couple more months, so we're looking at possibly 120 days until he gets over into the vicinity of the Mexican restaurant.
There's a, a couple strategies to help them with some months while they may be working through this estate issue, that we could take advantage of. But it would still require us to make a positive, yes, we're going forward to sign the contract in order to execute, I forget what it was, order to proceed.
Right. And again, if we go, you know, 120 days or five months into it, and their attorney has not come to an agreement on that parcel of land, and let's say even it goes a little bit further, and, and Atlantic Development's ready to wrap the project up, we will have to end up taking that part of the, the project totally off. But like I said, it's got to be agreed with the contractor before we sign the notice of award, what we're going to end up doing, just so we're transparent and we, you know, we're honest with him, so.
And so truly, we have two different options here, and that is executing the agreement with a potential start date 60 days out, which will not have a financial impact that extending the bid 60 days will have, because extending the bid means all of the costing in the bid can go up, correct?
Right. What it would do is, it would give us a chance to give him a notice of award, to lock him in as a contractor, and what he would do in those two months or 60 days would start ordering everything that goes with that project. So he'll go ahead and, and lock that in with the subcontractors to get all the stuff, and he'll just go ahead and hold it on his site until he's submitted a notice to proceed and have a written-out contract signed.
And if the council's interested in going that route, we would know during the course of construction, as we're nearing construction, the last couple months, whether this is forthcoming. We can decide what to do with that 58,000 at that time. We would be bringing a recommendation back to council if it's not resolved by then to, maybe we could set this aside for a period of time, and they would just add to it, you know, whatever the difference is when it's time to do it. So we've got a little bit of time on that.
Okay. Thank you all. What else? Anything?
I think that's it.
Okay.
I want to make a motion.
Councilmember Willis?
I have a question. What are we going to relay to the property owners of the restaurant so that they know if you don't sign this, what is the consequences?
I would ask Tim, based on council feedback tonight, to inform them within the next day or two of what the council's decision was. We do, my understanding is the council does want to get this full project done, including that stormwater, but because of this wrinkle, we may have to have a contingency to be dealt with and, towards the end of the project.
Well, I want to be sure they understand if they decline to sign the easement.
They don't have the, the authority to sign the easement.
Well, but if they, if they don't sign, eventually sign an easement agreement, do they, I want to be sure they understand what will happen.
Yeah, the, yeah, so if they, if they are unable to execute, consummate the easement agreement, the project will go forward without an improvement on their property.
But the city will not be responsible for the fact that they don't have that stormwater? They will understand that.
If they do not sign the easement agreement, yes, but we do need to talk about that contingency option if they are able to sign it after the project is done.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Or Anthony? What's the reasonable amount of time to give that?
I, I have no idea how long the probate's gonna be. I know the attorney has, has been engaged to work on it. You know, for lack of better terms, it's a double probate. In fact, one person passed away, and that interest went to an heir, and that heir also passed away, so now it's going to another heir on top of it. So that all needs to be worked out. I'm a little puzzled by, is this, are you asking the council to award this contract tonight?
We're, we're, we're asking for feedback.
I'm asking for, I guess, direction, and if they want to, yeah, pretty much direction, and if they want to approve it, then that's up to them.
Well, I mean, because you have all of the information in here, and I'm not clear. It talks about direction regarding the awarding, awarding of the bid, and the contract, and a draft contract is in the agenda item, so I think we need to have clarity on what, what all staff is requesting of council. You know, the, 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 the work at La Cantina, as I understand it, obviously, the city needs to get the easement. From our discussions, I'm not hearing any pushback with those interested property owners that actually are alive, as just, there's a wrinkle with one of the former property owners, right?
I think it was because there were options involved.
What I, what, I'm not...
There's, there's different scenarios that could play.
Scenarios, that's a better word for it.
But the scenarios, I'm not clear, because we've talked about this a bunch, so if you are requesting that the council award the contract, the, the only question mark is whether or not the city will do the work within the easement area, right? Assuming we get, we get the easement.
Correct.
So if, if, if the city doesn't get the easement, the city can't do the work on private property, right? So my point was, when it's time for that work to be done, if the city doesn't have the easement, it gets deducted, it's a change order that deducts the total contract price, and that gets written into the contract.
Correct.
Okay? So if the easement, if they approve, the council approves the contract in total here, including the work in the easement area, if the easement, easement is acquired, right? The contractor, contractor just does the work and it's include, it's already included in the contract. What I'm, so, so I think that's how you deal with this issue?
That's fine.
I think it becomes really complicated. I think it becomes really complicated, well, what happens if we approve this contract, we don't have the easement, and the contract is all done with the rest of the work? At that point, the contractor, assuming everything is complete, is released. Why on earth would the city then want to give any commitments whatsoever to La Cantina to do an improvement on their land? And then it just seems like the timeliness of it all just didn't work out for them.
Right.
Now, unless the city then requires, thinks that they need to do that for the benefit of the city in some, in some way, then I guess the city can take up the project at a later date. But if that's only benefiting their property and they just can't get their act together in a timely basis, why on earth would the city want to keep an open-ended commitment about funding a private project?
Right.
That doesn't seem appropriate. City serves, does municipal purpose, spends money for municipal purpose, city doesn't spend money for private development projects unless...
When this started out in 2019, the idea was to, because of the North Atlantic improvements, La Cantina got flooded probably three or four times because of where it's located, how low it is from the road and everything. So how can the city stop the flooding to help this business? And it was brought, told to me that we can't do that to fix the flooding problem unless we pave the road and do the wastewater down the road, I mean, the stormwater down the road. I agree that I think, you know, I think if we approve this with, it behooves them to get this signed and get it moving, it only improves their property, but it also gives relief to all the people down that street. And so I think what you're saying, Anthony, is just go ahead with the expenditure, and then if they don't have their act together by the time it gets to where they're at, then we just deduct that amount.
Correct. Forward way to go, gets the Oak Lane project moving along rather than just keeping a bid open-ended.
I have a question.
Member Jackson?
Thank you. I have a question for you, city attorney. And this may be getting into law that you're not, well, I'm convinced you know it all, but anyway. As that La Cantina participant that we had the double probate on, the executor of the initial probate estate, wouldn't they be able to sign in the interest of the estate the easement along with the other owners for La Cantina?
I'm not sure. I have to talk to the probate lawyer. I had a conversation with him, and it's, I'm not sure if the first executor is the one that passed away, and they have an issue there. So, I mean, there's some complications. I was informed, though, that they are working on trying to resolve this expeditiously, so that's all I can really tell you.
Okay. I was just curious, because I literally just got assigned as an executor, and we've gone several down the, down the road, several people. One was initially, then we found out another one was in there we didn't know about, and now it's gone and passed down to me. So I was like, within that succession, you know, based on how they set their, the will and the estate up, they may have that defined if there was trust involved and that kind of thing. So I was hoping that we might end up with them finding that out sooner versus later because they can't move the estate forward without having that line of succession on the executors.
I think if the council moves forward with this, I mean, it would behoove them, you know, to try to find, if there is some other interim solution, right, about the signing of the easement, and as Tim said, because Tim's had a dialogue with the living, not to say that you can't speak to the dead, but he's had conversations with the living, and there's been no pushback from the other three that would need to sign this easement. So, you know, they might be able to get this resolved in time, right, before this contract is completed by the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. I have a question for Anthony. So would we be okay to say that we approve this and then put exceptions like, you know, conditions if it wasn't signed and all that? Would we be able to do that, to say we approve the project, but conditions, dah 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 dah?
The condition is just something that happens all the time in construction. Sometimes work that was in the original plans decides that we're not going to do it, it gets deducted, right?
So we don't have to have that?
There's a whole change order. It would be, it would be handled as a change order in the construction process.
So we don't have to have that in our order?
Well, it, I probably would add some additional language to, you know, to the contract to call out, you know, a specific potential deduct regarding the work at La Cantina, you know, contingent upon whether we, the city acquires the easement or not, so.
That's what I was...
Specifically understood. Many change orders, additions and deductions occur all the time in construction contracts. Some of, some of them are not, you know, predictable at the beginning, and some, and some are. Some are like alternatives, right?
I just thought, because we do know we should put it in there, that way we're covered.
Yeah, I've done, I've done multiple projects where I've actually gone in there and known that it was, let's say they bid $900,000, and immediately I start doing the value engineering on the whole project, and that takes a change order to make it, you know, lower, a lower price. So, yeah, we do them all the time.
Sometimes you end up having to do additional work that you didn't anticipate, and as a result, then you don't have the funding, and then you have to figure out what you're going to deduct, right?
Correct.
In order to do the additional work. So it becomes fluid once the contractor starts doing work, right?
Yeah, I'd like to see a construction or large project without a change order. That would be more unusual.
That's, yeah, that's on the extraordinary side of things most of the time.
I would just, I agree with Dawn about, you know, letting those people know this is what we're doing, we're moving forward, and, you know, when it comes to, when the construction gets to your part, if it's not done, it's going to be deducted, and I just think for transparency, they need to know what's happening and maybe move, put a fire under their feet to get it done.
Now, are you speaking of the property owners or the owner of the restaurant?
Well, the property owners.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Because we need them to sign.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Willis?
I just want to be sure that we, we've set expectations properly, and so that they know, so that we don't have property owners coming to us later saying, well, you were going to do this, you didn't do it. Well, you didn't do your part. So, just so that we're clear on expectations, what is required of them.
Oh, I agree, it should be in writing and out there for anybody to see, absolutely.
I work with Tim. I mean, he's been in communications with the living, and I'll, yeah, we can coordinate a communication to those people, plus, you know, we'll reach out to the lawyer as well and advise him that, you know, the timing of this is around the clock.
So do we need a motion, or how do we do this?
Well, I think we... To do what, though?
As...
To move forward with the funding.
A motion to award the contract.
To execute the contract, will there need to be any revisions prior?
Yeah, I would just say, motion to award the contract to Atlantic. Authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with the city attorney modifying the contract to address the easement as a possible change order.
I'll make a motion that we do what Anthony said.
Yeah. And I will second that motion.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum, second by Councilmember Jackson. Any further discussion on this? City attorney, any other things you need to state? City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk?
Yeah.
That motion, the city attorney can...
Yeah, yeah.
Get it. Great. Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right. Thank you, Tim. So that concludes item number 13. We are now to the second item for action, which is the consideration to designate the city staff member to work with the Brevard Homeless Coalition's House Bill 1365 Advisory Council. Got to hear that presentation earlier from Amber, city manager, any?
Well, as, as I understand it, that we don't have a whole lot of a dog in this fight, and the request was either for the city manager or a planner to be on this council, and because we know Kyle's leaving, we're going to be hiring a planner, and there's a lot of new staff in community development department, certainly, I've got my hands full. I don't see a reason for us to appoint somebody. We got staff that needs to get their feet wet still.
I appreciate you saying that, and I think that if the time comes, is there a window that we would miss, once they become active?
Perhaps they could re-ask the question in a year.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Mr. Mayor, I think that that organization would welcome participation at any time.
Okay.
So if they understand that we do not have the current bandwidth because of the number of people that have left, that they will understand, and they would more than welcome us to participate later.
Thank you. Well, I think we keep it in front of us, and we...
Certainly a worthwhile cause.
If there is a monitor the next meeting, if anyone happens to learn, maybe we can find a time that works best for us, but thank you. Is there any further discussion on this consideration to designate, assume we don't have to take any action?
Is it okay if we record consensus of the council that we be not appoint someone this time because of the bandwidth, and we'd be glad to entertain the idea again in a year?
I'm fine with that. I was thinking a little less than a year to check back in, but if that's...
Why don't we, why don't we make it the beginning of the third quarter, fourth quarter?
Beginning, so July.
Yeah.
July of next year. Okay, we can record that consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
No, I said I'm good.
I just wanted everyone to make note of the, on that, handout that is discussing homelessness, you see right at the top the big picture takeaway related to Florida HB 1365. The bottom, second from the bottom bullet point.
In the presentation?
Yes. And I just want us as council to make note, because we have discussed this with the Live Local Act, and that is the 120% of AMI, which is average median income, does not fit the demographic of this population, and that's one of the points that I've discussed with Live Local. So they are literally pointing that out here, and when I saw that, I wanted to make note because that would, the 120% of AMI would make it to where someone around $70,000 to $75,000 a year is getting subsidized affordable housing. And that doesn't help our service personnel, that doesn't help people in this area that are trying really, really hard to live here. So as we look at going forward with them, you know, I just wanted to make sure you all saw that and were aware of that because of the fact that we really want to help our service personnel, and they are even pointing that out here, that it doesn't fit our homeless demographic here. So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. We are a city indeed, but we're just a little different, you know, smaller in some of those But I do appreciate this data and, you know, reading through it and seeing, and there's, while it did seem a little grim at times, I did see some improvements through there. It was good to see the homeless, veteran homelessness decreasing from 65 down to 52, but every single one of them would be good. So thank you. Any other discussion? I think we still got to call the, is, did you get consensus? Do we need to take that? I don't think we did.
I've got it, and we'll contact Amber.
Okay, and no one's opposed to, that's great. Thank you. So that was the last item for action, number 14. Last item is number 15, update to the special council meeting. It is 8:09 PM. I would request a five-minute, at least, recess, and if we need longer, we can, but I think a little bit, a little bit of time here to transition, and we'll hopefully get out of here as soon as we can. Thank you. So, yeah, it's 8:09, it's 8:15, even though I failed that earlier, so. Was it mine?
All righty, City Manager, we ready to go?
Yes, sir.
They called the meeting back to order. It is 8:23 PM. We are in our September 17, 2024, regular City Council meeting, and we are on Agenda Item Number 15, our only discussion item tonight, and the end of the agenda. I did not say that. I called the meeting back to order. And Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. So we did provide the update here. The newly included information is in there. So as we stated for the first part, Item One, we do have a new building official. He'll provide the statement about the project completion when it's complete. Kim Lee Horn report was already done back in April. Requested the plans from FPL, and FPL completed their part. Then utilizing engineering report above exercise available remedies. The city attorney has been in contact with the attorney representing Cape Three LLC. And at the time of writing this, the City Manager has offered to meet with the owners of Fillmore Townhomes. Did meet with them, and the mayor was with me too, and we met as well. And we gave them a full status update of where we were on everything, and got their input on what their desired outcome was. And the city attorney was working on the demand letter from there. Also informed them that we had been direct by City Council to inform the contractor that a demand letter was forthcoming, and that what the contents of that would be as directed by the City Council last time we talked about this, so that was stated to the contractor. The city attorney can talk about the demand letter if he wants to. I don't know if, I don't know, can't comment on that at this point. Then the City Manager and City Attorney to present any findings, opportunities, and ways to, the city can improve our community development department. This one, we presented that, and it includes forthcoming standard operating procedures. As far as Jackson, Mayor, if you'd like me to go on to that?
Yeah, just to make sure we're on the, okay. So that, everyone, that's on the same page here? Yes, City Manager?
Okay, and Item One was provide a report showing all action that was provided earlier and still available. Create and distribute administrative procedures reviewed by our city attorney complying with state law. And that will be, the administrative procedures will be the standard operating procedures, which Code Enforcement Department is currently working on. Those will be forthcoming. For city code enforcement employees, provide a listing of certifications and training. That was all done. Distribute a monthly BSNA report of all open code enforcement cases. That has been continuing for, I think, three months now it's been put out there. And finally, present any findings and opportunities to be distributed and ways we can improve it. Code Enforcement Department do have an additional entry there. Due to lack of substantiating evidence, the entry under 52423, staff received a complaint while conducting the site visit from the owner of the thrift store regarding the filling of the required soil has been stricken from the code of officer field notes record. And there's an asterisk in a note in there that states why it was stricken is because there wasn't any substantiating evidence for that. Moving forward, code enforcement staff will document all violations and compliance with the date and timestamp, video, photographic, or other appropriate evidence as applicable prior to creating the record. So that's where we are on all of these items. Still trying to dig into a little bit more of the audit records for Jackson, and when things were put in, and by whom, and talking with the mayor about that, and also our IT manager, see what information is there to be gleaned. We do have a code enforcement officer who's no longer with us, who stated that he's the one who put that record in there on that entry about 52423. But we're also trying to see what we can see from the audit trail, and any kind of crumbs left behind digitally. I guess that's the best way to say it about when that was done. Mayor, that's a quick recap of the whole item.
You? Counsel? Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Have we engaged the vendor to look at logs on when things are entered? Because all of that's recorded in the system, usually.
Yeah, Mike is, has been in contact with them to understand some of the limitations, and also some of the capabilities. And he was talking with the mayor and I about that just recently. Was the vendor consulted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis?
I have a question about Fillmore. Do we have any sort of a timeline on the, are we going to put any sort of a timeline on the letter, demand letter?
Happy to talk to you off record if you would like to. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, Tim Kellum?
We got an email today from Ms. Berkeley in that she asks about a black grate. It's supposed to be a cleanout. What is its purpose? She wants to know, can it be moved? Do we have anything we can answer her back on that? Is it per city code? Are we, we are not opposed to it being left in its current location? Do we know anything about that, Todd?
I believe, I'm not an expert in stormwater, but I believe that's probably a yard drain or a cleanout that was put in. And I would, I would prefer that we send that question off to Kim Lee Horn and let them give a recommendation on that.
And then she asked for a letter in writing that their reclaimed water will be included in the Fillmore Stormwater Project? And the irrigation systems need to be separated? Would that be something the city would provide her?
Typically, we will provide a reclaimed water connection upon request and payment of a fee for that. And I believe the owner did that, when, the previous owner of the property, got one connection. And I think that was the concern, is they wanted four connections, or they want four connections, not just one. So, I mean, we never do anything of that for free for somebody upon request. We always do it for a fee. What we talked about in our meeting was if the Fillmore Avenue Streetscape project gets approved, there likely going to be a reclaimed water component of that. And we heard that talked about tonight, that I think that would be the thing to do, is just instead of having the reclaimed water only on the south side of that street, also make it available to anybody on the north side. But any connections to it for any of those property owners would have to be treated the same as anybody else. It's just about making it available, that you'd have to pay to connect to it.
But she's asking for a letter in writing that says that you guys won't forget about their stormwater, I mean, their irrigation systems being separated.
What we won't forget is to make sure it's included in the Fillmore Avenue Streetscape project design.
Okay, thank you.
That water is on the south side only, but the gentleman on the, or the Fillmore property has?
Under the roadway from the south. That's a question for June, and she's not here. Yeah, it could be that it's a reduced pipe size that went under the roadway. So you'd be reducing flow to everybody then, of the four. So you want the larger pipe size brought to each property.
Okay.
But I'm not certain of that, Mayor, that that's the case.
That's, and I know that, I don't think that's, well, that circumstance happens a lot. Those types of projects for townhomes.
You get one owner who wants it, and nobody else wants it. Or at the time, he owned all of them, and he just wanted this one. So we did what he requested at the time.
Thank you.
Do we know where that location is for that black grate?
It's in the yard between the two duplexes.
Okay. Thank you.
You don't know if that's a cleanout?
Maybe a cleanout. It may be just a yard drain, an inlet for surface water. I'm not sure. It's been a long time since I've been out there.
I remember it being a drain, a yard drain.
I think Sherry referenced it could be a cleanout. Didn't she reference that in her letter?
Yes.
So if it's not a cleanout, it's just a drain then?
It's a drain. I think we saw photos, it sits high.
Yeah.
And there's some photographs of rain, or maybe even, yeah, video, or at least a photograph, I recall, of it going around it.
Is this the one that was 12 by 12, that was supposed to be 24 by 24?
I'm assuming that's.
Maybe that's the same thing.
That's what I was wondering, because that's literally not part of the city's system, right? Because it's up in between the houses.
Yeah, it's north of our, north of the property line. So if that's indeed that 12 by 12, that should have been a 24 by 24, that's part of the compliance with the original design issue.
Councilmember Jackson, I knew you'd ask the last question. Have, did that, anything else?
Well, I just asked, I asked earlier in the meeting, you know, will we be able to provide Tamara Mulback, who's asking for the documentation of that ticket that was entered? Who entered it? I know City Manager just said that that information is being worked on by our IT guy and the vendor.
We're in communication with the mayor on that as well.
Okay. Is there an update on the email that we received in regards to the proposed solutions regarding the drain in the driveway? And some of these things, not yet? I can, is it?
Which property?
Fillmore. Do we have an idea when we will look at what, look at those options that were provided? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, do we have any more questions this time? Got a few things I just want to say. Thank you for the update. The, these items have caused a lot of pain. And the one thing that I would never want is that it was applied to the, you know, the wrong person, or that, you know, we do have real victims in the world, and we try to sit in the role as a governing body, and be responsive to citizens, businesses, community members, our contractors, developers, all the parties, and do it with a team of city staff and our city manager. And I do want the record to state that I'm extremely discouraged on the reality of the update of the majority, if not all, of these records. Yes, there are some things that have come out that have improved, I think, no doubt. And I'm grateful for those, and I've appreciated the city manager's efforts and actions taken within some of those spheres to try and really create change. And then second is I've seen actual changes in the work product, in BSNA. I've seen improvements in agendas that come out around community development. And I know that there has been some changes, obviously, not only personnel, but just administrative. I think this, this agenda item from January has, no doubt, provided, I think, a lot of positive things. But on the other side, I do want to recognize that I know it has came with pain for all of us in different ways, and some of us share those ways. And today, I celebrate those wins, and I want to see those continue. But from, from my seat, looking in and out, we, we have a lot of work to do. And things that I felt and I knew as stated to me for years, I mean, going back from the beginning, and I think we've all endured in different ways about, and this isn't across the board, the city. It was in specific departments, and obviously, those, those, those things should have not happened. And today, I still struggle to get what I believe is very reasonable information that after nine months, coming on a problem that was put on the agenda that was happening for a couple of years, it got to that point, is that I am not where I hoped we would be. And far beyond that, July was the time where I said, you know, I hope we're done with this. I think we have been patient. And the final stretch, there's some blocks to get across that does not make any sense to me. And so my plea with the council is that you know I am working as much as I can with the city manager in on this. But my feedback to you, because I don't get to talk to you, is I have not been very satisfied with the outcomes of the majority of the items in these updates. And that's the cold, hard truth. From the way it was presented, in many respects, in certain sections, has nothing to do with, with quality work. There's, there is, there's a lot of issues that were brought to my attention out of this that I'm concerned will continue if we do not talk specifically about what those are as a council. And so the big thing that, that I have not, I think, received is a clear answer to some of these questions, and the ability then to take that and to make sense of it. And so we've asked the counts, or we've asked for some direction, or take action, City Manager and the City Attorney's Office. I believe we heard the updates tonight on where those are. But my hope is you understand with the limited amount that we have to talk, that how am I doing with this? It's not going well for my side. So with that being said, I think some things are underway. We're going to have an update. But between now and October, if we don't have some significant resolution to, to these items, I think we need to ask ourselves why. That's, there's, that's connect, this is connected to a lot of the responsiveness and the issues that I think that we've, we've struggled where we turn things in, and then they don't get resolved. And the truth is, we have to do our jobs to be as responsive to the residents in the community as we can. And it's eight or 10 problems have kind of, the same ones have occupied the majority of the seven years that I've served. And it's been, it just, it, it's gone so long that my hope was we'd take these and we can, we can clearly identify the problems. And I, I haven't been able to clearly identify the problems as step one with, with the avenues that I have. And I am thankful for the city manager, city attorney, IT director, and all parties who've been involved. But some of the answers are, well, we, we just can't figure that out. And so with that being said, you know, Ms. Mulback's comments around records being changed, I've seen records being deleted with no ability to see what was deleted. I've seen records being created with no ability to see how it was created, or what was created. We have discovered that we can't see prior versions of documents. And in a government organization, I don't think that's where we want to be. There's been very critical, crucial documents that were evidently printed that have, that are now gone or disappeared. That's unacceptable to a certain extent. Of course, it happens. But under, again, these circumstances, those types of problems continue, and it really leaves me really nothing to work with. And I don't know how to say it any other way, so thank you. I would like to set, there's more things that need to be said or want to be said. We certainly can. But I don't want to say unless this council wants to engage more or has more questions. I would like to set some sort of expectation between now and the next meeting. And I'm willing to put the time in to make myself as clear as possible to the city manager. If this council approves, I will go and work one-on-one with him. But it has to be understood that his time there is time away from other things. That's the reality that I don't take lightly. And so if I had the opportunity with him, the city attorney, to work through, and potentially a city engineer or whoever else, in the most transparent way we can, the issues, I think we are at that, that final stretch there that we can come away with something that's, that's going to allow this to move forward. But my challenge has been, I don't have them all in the same room. And I'm not blaming city staff or city manager or any of the parties for that. I'm saying I would not want to be in the room with those with the amount of time that I think is going to be needed without the blessing of the council. I'm not going to go in on the back of the January meeting and say 5-0 vote, or consensus was taken. But the part of that consensus was that the city manager has the necessary resources to find the answers. And the answers I've got today are essentially, we've reached our skill capacity, and this is as far as we've got. I accept that wholeheartedly. But we have to, I have to talk through that and make sure that's the case. I did get a chance to meet with the IT director and city manager today for, I think, about an hour. Some progress was made there. That was very enlightening. But again, there were problems that I think might take us longer. I don't know the path, but potentially, if there's funding to even go and bring in outside help, BSNA, if their time is needed to verify some of the records, some sort of budget, maybe it's $1,000, here's, or $5,000 to put. And if the city manager has that today to spend, I just want to account anything that I'm suggesting with the council. And so working with BSNA for, and potentially the city engineers, I know both of those have hourly costs for their time usually. That's it. I think that's a reasonable next step. And my hope was that we would actually call a special meeting out of that meeting and provide an immediate update of some sort to the council before the next, before the next meeting in October. But for tonight, I don't think it's a good use of time to go back through a lot of the issues. It's more about, for me, I think I've explained to the best my ability.
I have, excuse me, I have a problem with spending money. Our budget, we just, I mean, we put, we have very little in contingency and reserve. So I have a problem spending money on that. I'd like to know, well, one, I haven't really heard, or actually, you're stating that records have been deleted, created, and after, documents have disappeared, excuse me, disappeared. I would like to see documentation on that, where you're getting that. And I just, I have a problem. We've spent a lot of money on this. Our budget, we don't have that much extra anymore. So I have a problem with that.
Councilmember Davis, documentation on that statement that I made prior, you want some proof to what I'm saying?
Yeah, I've never seen where, where documents have been deleted or created or disappeared. I've never seen that, so I would like to know where you're getting that information.
In BSNA, if you click on the audit function, a few clicks, it shows a trail of what's happened. And one of the trails, I won't get it right, says things like an inspection or an enforcement record was update, updated, or letter inserted.
I've seen that.
And letter deleted, those types of things. When you click on them, you can't see what was uploaded and what was deleted. We're still thinking about other ways to find that out. But until, it's, that's an example.
But that's what you're referring to then? Okay, I didn't know, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's one example. There's, there's other examples. And I, but I don't think, if you want me to go through each one of them tonight, I don't think.
No, I've seen that in BSNA.
And as far as the contingency goes, you said we don't have a lot of money. I, I don't know what our contingency is right now. Do you?
They said the other day.
It's okay.
Yeah, bottom line is we have stripped ourselves.
You said we don't have a lot of money.
We have.
The last financials we have is completed only takes us, I think, through July. So I don't know what we have in the bank. But I just literally said $1,000. That's, that was kind of to gauge where I am, so thank you. Yes, Councilmember Jackson, sorry.
As someone that works with systems, I know that when this system was implemented, As someone that works with systems, I know that when this system was implemented, it was during the pandemic and training was remote. That's always a challenge. I was in corporate training as a master technical instructor for many years. The biggest challenge I had during doing those things was moving from a classroom where you had your students with you and you could participate. There was more participation, questions fed off of each other, and you were aware that your students were listening and that kind of thing. When we implemented this, it was one of the most difficult times we had seen in our lifetimes as far as having a strange situation with this system. So in my opinion, we should have done follow-up training by now because it was, they were trying, everyone was trained on it under some of the most difficult circumstances. So to me, it makes total sense to spend some money on this because not only can it help with this situation, it can also help us identify if we're using or utilizing the system incorrectly or not utilizing the system to its full benefit. Those things will be identified as well as anything that you might need to find here that we don't know how to get to. Or we need a special person like our IT director that has access to that specific section of the system. There are little, literally places within the system you can get to things that no one even knows those places in the system exist unless you're a technician that certified on them and things like that. So I think it's a good idea to look at going through this process because we could learn more about ways that it'll benefit staff for us on utilizing the system as well. There's a lot that you could learn besides just trying to find how this document can't be found or how that one can't be found. It could also identify, okay, these are your steps to find these things each and every time, and this is something that we missed and we didn't go over that in training or didn't go in the detail that we did. Or everyone was simply so stressed during that time, which was high pressure for everyone during the pandemic, that they didn't pick up on that. So I think giving, giving the vendor the benefit of doing follow-up on this particular item, which will help us, it could also help us with other, other points of utilizing the system.
Thank you.
Mayor? Um, in my opinion, I think that, you know, instead of us getting this every month, because you are the mayor and because you've had more access to the residents, the people involved, the building officials, the city manager, the city attorney, maybe we could do an agenda item or a discussion item where you list your frustrations and the things you've found that we need to fix with a code or a policy or something. Because you have a better understanding of the whole, you know, the whole thing being that you have talked to, you know, the Hearst and, you know, everyone involved and have had meetings with Todd and Anthony and whoever else. I just think that, I feel like we're just talking and talking and talking and we're not getting anywhere. So I mean, if you listed your frustrations, the things you've found, the things that you think would help, and then brought it to all of us to discuss, that would really help us understand and, and take your suggestions and, you know, put it up with the council, see what they say. You know, we all have good ideas and good suggestions. But I think something like that would help us at this point not to re, you know, rehash the stuff, know where we're going. Okay, this is, this is my frustrations. This is what I found, you know? And this is my idea on how we can fix this. I think that would be a great discussion or agenda item to bring up so we can take all this in and move ahead, you know, get somewhere from where we are. And like I said, you have more knowledge of the whole thing than, you know, all of us. And like, you know, you said, this is the only time we have a chance to talk to each other. So if you brought it up, if we brought it up in a discussion item or an agenda item and said, you know, and at the end of this, this is how we're going to fix this, I would be, you know, supportive of that. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I think it's certainly just my view, but I would, I'm going to continue to, to see it through. And if that requires staff's time to that level, but your point to the time in these meetings that it's taken. And I think I would give, from my seat, happy to provide, just going down the 10 items, sort of, my opinion.
Right.
Legislatively, as one of five.
Right. And then share it with us. And then we understand where you're coming from and what you, what you've observed and found out. I think that would help us, you know?
But wouldn't that undermine it being a public record if we're doing, if we're being updated via email? Or are you meaning in a meeting, Kim?
Yeah, in a meeting, in a meeting. Just, or however, yeah, however they want. That way we have it off the agenda.
I think, yes, if, if I'm working, which I have been working, it's, but we've gotten to that point of where I think it's time to talk a little bit more. I would like to have, when ready, just call a meeting. And we all try to make that work and be flexible. Once we have that date, hopefully, and it needs to be, you know, a meaningful update. Not I got one update, but between now and when that day comes, call a meeting, we come together and try to provide my perspective and opinion.
I would love to hear solutions because so far I've heard, we've talked about this. We don't have all the information yet still, nine months later. And we absolutely have no solutions to making sure this isn't happening moving forward. And we need solutions at this point. I think the citizens want to make sure that we're, we're good and make sure that we've got cohesive policies and procedures going forward, which I know they're working on the SOP. City manager, do you have any target date on that SOP?
I would ask the community development department if you have an update on that.
They're all sitting in that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
If you're, if you're going to have meetings with the city manager and city attorney, I would just encourage you to completely articulate all your concerns. Don't hold anything back. Put it all out there so that they can address it. They don't have any misperceptions of what you're asking for, but just put it out there. Give them the ask. Tell them what you want. Oops, sorry. I also think that we, we should be able to find the funds to do any additional training or upgrades to BSNA if we need to. I know that, I'm pretty confident that BSNA probably has a versioning function where they can, where you enter a ticket and then you can version it. You'll see everything that has been put into it, checked in, checked out, what has been added, what's been taken out, or it keeps it. Now, again, we all know that in BSNA, there was working documents that were put in the wrong places. The, these shouldn't be part of a public record. This is somebody trying to get to creating that public record. So we have to, we have to somewhat, I don't want to say discount, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that maybe some of those deleted items were just nothing more than a bad attempt at fixing a document and it just got deleted. So, you know, that, without a complete versioning and a snapshot, you're, you're really never going to be able to know exactly which was what. But I would encourage you to, in your meetings, to just be very forthcoming with all your concerns and just very open, honest, and blunt. So that way we can get, we can get to answers because everybody will know what your concerns are. I know times I've met with the city manager, I just go ahead and lay it out there and he'll either shoot me down or agree with me or, you know, suggest another avenue for me to, to take. But don't hold anything back.
And then I, I just want to correct myself. I thought when you were talking about BNS, BSNA, I can't remember if I said that, you wanted them to come in and do investigation. That's why I was saying I don't, you know, really need to spend money on that. I don't have a problem with spending money on training or whatever. I misunderstood what you were saying. So I just want to correct that.
Yeah, not, not even an investigation, just optimizing the technology, using it in its fullest, i.e., which could be done, completed through training for sure. Thank you.
No, I understand that.
And with that, you can get information about auditing, what has occurred within the system. And we should have that due to sunshine laws and public record requests and all of those things. So those are things that could definitely be something that we're just not as an expert at yet because of how this was implemented and the timeframe. But it could help us identify things with this and give us the skill set going forward where we can actually make a difference as a city by utilizing the system correctly. And if there is something missing or something that happens, being able to find where that is easily and identifying it.
Yes, it, it's not even, our ability to, to do these things, I think, will reward us very much in the future to provide rock-solid evidence to defend our positions in the city. And so I thank you all for providing comments and feedback on that.
So do we think it needs to be on the agenda every month still? Or do we agree that you will meet, you know, you'll meet with city manager or whoever and then the information will be updated as needed or as it's?
My recommendation, my perspective tonight, if you want to hear a live perspective on how I feel, is I think, I would like to call a special meeting between now and before the next meeting. And in between that, now and that meeting, I would like to conclude all of this of, as I see it, to the, from, from my perspective, with as much information as I can. And the way to get there, I think, is through some time with the city manager and potentially city attorney and, and engineers.
I mean, she might have some really good suggestions on how we can fix this.
Yes.
Are you going to be able to have all of that information for the special meeting between now and the next? I'm just, you know, if we stop putting it in here and make it an agenda item, that, okay, this is it, or a special meeting, but have all our ducks in a row for that special meeting.
And I would like to suggest that when we get, if you can get BSA, BSNA in there with, in your investigative meeting, or maybe a follow-up meeting prior to the one that you would have with us, please talk to the account executive who will have the technical support people available for you to help get some of those answers about how we're utilizing the system and how we would be able to, you know, get the information you need and make a better, and utilize the system more efficiently.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion on this?
This is just a discussion item. I think, no, I think consensus opposed, what we said is what we said. No one said, you know, anything excessive here. And, and I think the city manager's first statement of, I need to work on another higher priority item is something that I'm obviously, there's things that are more important that need to be done. And so I, I would not get in the way of that. But I trust that he and I could at least find potentially a day to, to work together and to try and, and get this across, across the line.
Okay, so what are we saying?
I don't think, yeah, no action. It needs to be taken on this.
Since it's that you'll meet with the city manager and the appropriate people within the teams to be able to move forward, and then we'll schedule a special meeting after your findings.
Yes, I think it's important that we know that a meeting should follow shortly after.
So we will?
Yes. My goal would be that it's not on October, but we would have one more meeting prior.
That's fine.
But at any point, obviously, anyone could put it on the agenda. But respecting, I think, that, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's 10 months in, so. Okay, well, thank you, city manager.
I think it'd be very helpful for you and me and the city attorney to meet, just the three of us, for the first part of this, just to make sure we can articulate exactly what we're requesting here in, in actionable statements. So everybody's very clear. And then from that, we can set up perhaps a meeting with the city engineer or perhaps a meeting with IT director and somebody from BSNA. I mean, I don't think Kim Lee Horn needs to be a part of the BSNA thing, and likewise, BSNA doesn't need to be part of the Kim Lee Horn thing. But if we could just, the three of us meet and just clearly communicate and write down what it is exactly we're looking for, for the deliverables to get out of this situation, this entire January 24th, what does, what does a wrap-up look like? Because I have answers to these, you know, seven questions, that kind of a thing. That'd be helpful. A good place to start.
Prior to?
The first thing we do is.
Okay, suggesting goals.
Goals. Goals and outcomes, yeah, defining them.
My goals, yes, and I would let the 10 items, I think, each one of those going down, my goal would be that we, we work through that order. And there might be goals around that, but agreed. I think that would present well and make a, give us the ability to, to close out. Okay, well, any other comments on this item? I do appreciate, again, the council weighing in and we will, I think, hopefully make progress between this. progress between this 30-day cycle and the next, and, yes, maybe in the year with some, some solutions. Okay. Any other comments, city manager, on this item?
No, sir.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to the reports. It is 9:12. What, now, reports is usually a time where we, we talk about things in the community. I know we haven't done these at all this year, so, you know.
So excited.
All jokes. Please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've been contacted by a number of residents regarding trimming of vegetation along the property, particularly the city's property, and the.
That on the dunes, sir?
Dunes, yes. I'd like to ask if we could get staff to investigate, look at our publications, our things that are current on how we can work with the residents who want to trim some of that, and look at other beach communities and what they are doing. Because we had an incident where the city gave permission to trim some sea grapes, and they went way beyond what they were supposed to do. I would like to get staff to work on something that gives a policy and procedures, process, and maybe, maybe if they come back with a recommendation, maybe an ordinance or something that creates a way that we're not going to get in trouble with FDEP. And the citizens that want to do some trimming or maintenance of sea grapes or mangroves or whatever has a process, and we, the city can control what they're doing so that we don't go afoul of any regulatory agency or do anything that is environmentally unsound. If council would support that, I would like to ask the city manager to direct that, if you would.
I could clarify, Mayor. I believe the, it's a two-fold request. One is to look at all current documentation regarding dune vegetation, so that could involve everything we have from our sea grapes guidelines to our turtle protection, to turtle lighting, to, you know, hurricane hardening of the shore, all that stuff, everything that we've currently got, currently published out there and we're promoting. But also, what are other cities doing who are challenged with the same question of trimming vegetation on dunes? There's several cities south of us here that, I've looked at the Property Praiser's website, and they've got city property out there just like we do. So we can certainly ask them what they're doing, what have their, been their lessons learned, and if that's the request of council, we can have a, a return of that research. Not only, what, what do we currently promote for our dune that, that is about vegetation? What are we already telling people? Long history about this, but also what are other cities doing that we can learn? I know we have publications out there about dune protection, about wildlife, sea turtles, sea lighting, regulations. I think we should bring it all together so we don't miss anything.
Well, we, we have a number of residents who are concerned about people camping in the sea grapes. I've taken photos of what looks like campsites, and they're, they're concerned about safety. So let's, let's include that, that prism as well, if we're looking at it.
Mayor, is there consensus for, to bring back that research?
I, I.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to task that to community economic development. I will not be at the staff meeting, I'll be my, with my wife all day tomorrow, but Mia will run that meeting and make sure that gets tasked to the community economic development. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Have one other thing. I was recently appointed to the district, FDOT's District Five Safety Steering Committee, and I'm the only representative from Brevard County. So I'm looking forward to advocating for the city of Cape Canaveral with FDOT and making sure we get what we want, in addition to, to a lesser extent, but nobody heard me say this, in addition to the rest of Brevard County. So, but my focus is gonna be on Cape Canaveral. So, thank you.
Thank you. The rest of the county loves Cape Canaveral anyways.
They're jealous of us.
Okay, just doing, going down the line, reports. Councilmember Davis?
I'm here.
Jackson?
Well, as I said earlier, I'm so excited. We made it to this section. I've had reports almost every month that I've been. So I have a couple of things to report. I have been working with our director of IT, as well as SAC and city manager, on working to make sure that we have a cyber security plan in place, which is, it is being required by the state of Florida on January 1st. And in looking at that, I've obtained a certification. I am providing information to the city manager. We are gonna be meeting at some point along with Mr. Delaio, the IT director, and also SAC, so that we can take a look at moving that forward. It's quite detailed, and there are state requirements that are in place that we need to be aware of. So just so you know, I've been working on that. That is as a result of the symposium that I went to in St. Augustine, that you all approved me going to. So I've passed information off to our IT director. He is now in the certification program through the state as well, so that he'll become state certified for cybersecurity covering our city. So that's one of the reports. It's gonna be quite detailed. This is not an easy process. It is a lot of information, took hours to go through the courses, and it's gonna take him a, a lot of time, but he's very excited about being involved in that. So that's one thing. And then I've also been working with our city attorney and our city manager on some updates that you all will see in the October meeting for Live Local.
Thank you. Mayor Pro-Town?
I don't have any reports. I just have a question. Have we heard anything?
No, we, we haven't re-engaged with them for some time on that, and, and partly that's because there's a lot of things going on with the lifeguard program, which I understand that's part of the budget this, meeting this month. And frankly, I'm glad that we're not involved in that argument right now about lifeguards. I was hoping to let that whole thing kinda settle, and then we could re-engage with them after that.
For Live Local, my report, I just wanna work backwards. There was some talks about time running out. I spoke, are we tracking that? Are we okay? And if, if that's a part of your, your task?
On the?
The exemption to opt-out of the program, the county did it.
That is, that is the resolution that city attorney has put together for us, so it's already prepared. He's done his homework. I assisted a little bit on that, and he will be bringing it to us in the October meeting to discuss that very issue that we talked about, that I mentioned from the homeless coalition's documentation for opting out of the AMI for mid to medium income. So our city attorney has done a great job. I took a look at that. We've gotten participating cities and information on agencies here in Brevard County of who has already done this, and we'll be presenting all of that in the October meeting.
Thank you. I had a note to, to ask that, so I don't have any updates other than really thankful that we were able to, to get together and make that budget work. And so it was one in seven, and, or one in six, and I, I, I really think it's going to be interesting at the end of the, I guess, October. I wanna see what the other cities did. I've seen some cities talking about a tax decrease, and it's really a millage rate decrease, and, you know, that stuff is confusing, and, and I think citizens who are informed about those things is, is a good thing. And so tonight, I cannot emphasize my appreciation for everyone who, who was able to make that happen, and that is it. The, I'm 9:23 PM. We are through the reports, and with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.